I cannot hear anything. Or see.
Twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to do roll call. Mary Camilli. Mary, I think you're here.
She's on the unmute. Mary, can you unmute yourself?
Unmute, how do you unmute?
We're doing roll call, Mary, Mary Camilli. You're here, right, Mary? You're here, right?
Thumbs up if you're here. Thumbs up if you can hear us.
Can you hear us, Mary? I'll come back to you. Nancy Capello?
Here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Gerald? Bob?
Here. I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Spencer Lombard is absent, he's working. Frank Marcy?
Here.
Kristen Wagner?
Here.
Edwin Zacharias?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mary Camilli?
What's that say?
Recording.
Recording?
Mary, you're here, right?
What's that one say?
Meeting information.
You're, yeah, okay, Mary, you're here, we're just doing roll call. Okay, we're, the first, the next thing I'm...
Can you hear Bob, Gerald?
I'm sorry, what? The next thing I'm...
Can you hear me now? This is Bob, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think with Mary, you can see based on her video that she's really, it's slow, if, sometimes if you turn off your video, it helps with the real time. Responding. It doesn't use up as much bandwidth and she might be able to hear better if she turns off her video. Just a suggestion.
Might be able to hear her.
Mary, if you turn off your video, you might be able to hear us better.
Sorry, Mary.
Testing.
I can hear you.
All right, we're done here. As long as they can hear me, I don't care. We have to close the...
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, election of officers. Is there somebody who would like to nominate a chair?
Yes.
That's you.
I would like to nominate Lynn Connery to be the next Chair of the Board of Ethics.
Is there a second?
Oh, not with you, Frank.
We have a second for Lynn Connery for Chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Frank? Do we have a second for Frank? Do we have a second for Frank?
Edwin.
Doesn't seem like it.
I told you second.
Okay, thank you, Edwin. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do we have a discussion?
Yes, I will say that Lynn Connery has been doing a fantastic job of, of putting together the meetings and making sure that everything has been going according to plan. While we did not have a Chair, she arranged the appointment of the attorneys and I feel right now she has the greatest grasp on what's going on with the, the current situation with the Board. And she would make a fantastic Chair.
Okay, I guess we'll go to vote. How many in favor of Lynn Connery?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, okay, we'll do a roll call. Thanks, Marcy. Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Nancy?
Yes, aye.
May I vote for myself? Bob?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
So we, so Lynn Connery, I am the Chair. Now we'll go to Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Frank.
Second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, do we have a discussion?
I know where to begin.
Seeing no discussions. We'll do the roll call. Mary Camilli? Nancy?
Here.
Me, yes. Bob? Frank?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
And congratulations, Frank.
Well, thank you. It's an honor.
The next point of business is the appointment of the Commission Clerk. And I move that we, um, continue with Heather. She has been excellent behind the scenes, what, you know, whenever we need anything, she does whatever we need to do. And she's been here from the beginning, she might not want the job, but I move that we maintain Heather as our Commission Clerk.
I second.
Third. Any other nominate, well, also, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So moved. Heather will continue to be our Commission Clerk.
Congratulations, Heather.
I, can someone make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I motion to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? Seeing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes from the last meeting? Yes.
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 So moved. Public participation.
Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive.
Hello, Rose.
No, I'm, I don't know whether I'm happy to see you back in a meeting or not happy, but it is what it is and whatever happens, happens. But it's been a while since I've been asking for this to happen and I'm sorry that it had to be a complaint that had to come in to cause it to happen. Frank, I'm so glad to see you're back. Not that you ever missed any meeting.
It's great to hear from you, Rose, I was looking forward to seeing you tonight, I'm sorry you couldn't be here.
Well, it was tricky, I got into the Parks and Rec meeting to have time to participate in their meeting, caught the beginning of the Town Council meeting and was able to get in on this one as well. I, I'm taking it that you're having some difficulty with the audio visual, or, I'm on Zoom, just on the phone and I heard everything, I, everything was fine at my end. So I just wanted to let you know by phone, not on the computer, it was okay. And just one thing, and Lynn, don't, don't kill me, but when they voted you in as Chairman, do you have to be in as Lynn Connery or Ellen Connery?
Ellen.
Okay.
Lynn's my middle name.
What's that?
Thanks.
Yeah, did they, I'm glad that you're the Chairman, I just couldn't hear what they were saying, whether they said Lynn or Ellen, and then I couldn't hear who the Vice Chair was, it was kind of cutting in and out, but in the beginning it was okay. So I just wanted to let you know that, I don't know if anybody else is having any problems. But I'll let you get on with the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Remarks by Board members? Seeing none, we'll move on to number eight, adoption of rules of order. Yes, and I would like to introduce our Attorney for the Commission, it's, you want to introduce yourself, Mark?
Good evening, I'm Mark Needleman, I was called in by the Mayor, as I understand, that's the proper procedure under your rules. And have been asked to act as Counsel to the Board of Ethics. I have reviewed the matter and all your proceedings to date and would like to make some suggestions, recommendations to the body this evening. With me is Attorney Scott Lingenfelter, Scott works with me. By way of background, I served as Town Attorney in Bloomfield for thirty-three years, I recently resigned that position. And Scott is currently serving as the Town Attorney in East Gramby, is the former First Selectman in Suffield. So between the two of us, we have quite a bit of background in municipal law. Excuse me. Your regulations, um, the code actually, your Code of Ordinances calls for the adoption of certain regulations and rules of procedure. And I have prepared for your consideration, two pages which have been distributed to members of the Board. One are regulations of the Board of Ethics and there are five sections set forth in that. And then a suggested motion regarding adoption of the rules of order and regulations. Would be appropriate to adopt both of those, but before any motion, I would be happy to answer any questions or provide any commentary to help. Madam Chair, if there are no questions, then it would be appropriate to move the adoption of the motion that is printed entitled "Motion Regarding Adoption of Rule of Order and Regulations."
Frank, you want to read the motion?
Motion regarding adoption of rule of order slash regulation, regulations. Move that Robert's Rules of Order, latest edition, shall be the parliamentary authority for the Ethics Commission, except that should any of the rules be inconsistent with the provisions of state law, the Town Charter, or Chapter thirty-two of the Code of Ordinances, then state law, the Town Charter or Code of Ordinances shall prevail, provided further that there may be discussion after a motion to table has been offered. Move that the proposed regulations of the Newington Board of Ethics shall be adopted. Well, that's, that's secondary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second, we have two seconds.
Move that the proposed regulations of the Newington Board of Ethics shall be adopted.
And we have two seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Aye.
So adopted. And the next order, I'm going to turn it over to Mark again, who's going to talk about how we will handle our investigations.
Good evening. Let me start off by reminding members of the body, Section thirty-two dash twelve entitled Confidentiality of Complaints and Investigation. Section A says, "All proceedings up to the finding of probable cause," and then goes on to say, "shall remain confidential, except upon the request of the respondent." To date, no such request has been made. And then goes on. I bring this to your attention because we are meeting tonight in public session and keeping in mind the rules of confidentiality, it would be inappropriate to mention names, to name names this evening. It would be premature to do so, so in discussing tonight any matters, I would ask that members of the Commission, the Board, be particularly sensitive to the fact that at this stage, all matters are deemed confidential. And that's for the fairness of all concerned, the complaint of the respondents and the Commission. Let me review the background of where we are to date, as I understand it. Complaints were filed on October fifth and October tenth. The complainant, in all those cases, was the same individual, was notified of the receipt within the proper period of time. This Board of Ethics met an executive session on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. There was a finding at that meeting that the complaint has sufficient evidence to warrant an investigation. The Board of Ethics then notified the complainant and the respondents of this initial determination on October thirtieth via FedEx or, and/or hand delivery. Having met those jurisdictional requirements, I draw your attention to Section thirty-two dash eleven, Section G two B. And this lays out really for you the role and the actions of the Board at this point in time. It states, "The Board has the power to hold hearings, administer oaths, examine witnesses, receive oral and documentary evidence, subpoena witnesses pursuant to the procedural rules adopted by the Board to compel attendance and require production or examination by the Board of any books and papers deemed relevant." So in plain talk, what that means is this body is charged with the responsibility of conducting a hearing, swearing in witnesses, receiving testimony, reviewing documents, that if they aren't provided voluntarily, that this body has the authority to issue a subpoena, compelling the attendance of a witness, and also compelling the production of documents. And all that would be required, and I would suggest shortly, that the body adopt a regulation as called for, a procedural rule, that subpoena and production of documents shall be in accordance with Connecticut general statutes and the provisions of your Section thirty-two dash eleven G two six. And we can get back to that specific. It would be my recommendation that if we are to go forward as you're charged, that we would schedule a hearing date at the earliest reasonable opportunity. That notice would be given to the complainant and respondents and/or their legal counsel, that we would meet at that point, that would be an executive session as authorized by state statute. That witnesses would be placed under oath, that they would be examined, and I presume, but certainly you retain the right to make the call, that I would, on your behalf, do the examination. That as provided for in your regulations, there can be cross-examination by the respondents or their representatives, and we can get into that obviously at that time in more detail. We would invite parties to attend that meeting. Obviously, we would hope and expect they would voluntarily attend, along with any documents that we request. And if they didn't at that time, the body could consider authorizing the issuance of a subpoena, which I would make arrangements for. And state statutes provide a process for issuing a subpoena, and your regulation also indicates that in addition to an indifferent person, or a state marshal, that the local police department is also authorized to issue a subpoena. So again, that's the process. If the group has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, then I would recommend a motion that we schedule a date for the hearings. I would take care of issuing the notices to the complainant and the respondents on your behalf, also indicating what documents the Board would like to have produced, and that we would meet on that date and time. And hopefully we would receive the complete cooperation of those invited to attend, and that they would respond by both attending and producing the requested documents. And if not at that time, the body would certainly have a few options, one of which I've already just laid out to you. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think the next order of business would be to discuss and set a date and time for this hearing and for you to adopt a motion authorizing the issuance of subpoenas and requests for production as provided for by Connecticut law and your own ordinance, Section thirty-two dash eleven G two six.
Question.
Yes.
Um, in regards to the disclosure of confidential information?
Yes.
Is there a regulation in place regarding if we feel that there was confidentiality was not kept in regards to a complaint?
Well, I, look at that, just give me a moment. Thirty-two dash twelve A says, "No part of the confidential complaint, the aforesaid information," meaning the complaint itself, "or the aforesaid investigation shall be disclosed to any third party by the respondent, the complainant, any person contacted for purpose of obtaining information, legal counsel, witness designated party, border staff member, unless said confidentiality has been waived by the respondent." Now, it goes on to say in subsection B, "If a disclosure is made, the Board may, after consultation with the respondent, if the respondent is not the source of disclosure, publish its finding and a summary," which really doesn't apply at this point in time, that would be down the road. Those are the only provisions I see concerning the matter, but we can look at that in the interim.
Okay, yeah, just my question was, does it have to be like proposed if, say, in public forum, things were discussed that shouldn't have been discussed? So we have probable reasoning to believe that confidentiality was not upheld. Is there like a process to like question people on that?
I will be ready to address that at your next meeting. Wasn't aware that that might be raised, but Attorney Lingenfelter and I will look into that and be ready to discuss it next.
Because I reviewed it, I'm like, there's still no process.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that there is. I'm gonna double check the state statutes on that as well.
It may be a separate ethics complaint, so it would be an ethical violation at that point, so if there's a new ethics complaint, we'd have to be brought up at that time saying code was violated by so-and-so, so there's a secondary complaint for violating the code.
We'll, we'll get back to something specific.
Yeah, I just don't want to discuss that.
Are there any questions about what the next step should be or how we would go about doing that? If not, Madam Chair, I would ask that the body move and adopt a motion authorizing the town, I'm sorry, the Committee's counsel to issue subpoenas and production of documents if necessary, as provided for by Connecticut statutes and your Section thirty-two dash eleven G.
I would like to make a motion that we provide our Attorney the ability to get subpoenas, documents, according to our Charter statute for the next meeting, which we will have the hearings.
And that would be your Code of Ordinances and Connecticut statutes.
And Connecticut statutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Think the next order of business, Madam Chair, would be to set a hearing date.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
Well, um, what I'm thinking about is issuing a letter to the individuals that we would like to have in attendance, ask them to respond whether their attendance will be forthcoming on a voluntary basis, and whether any documents we're looking for, and I would enumerate them, be produced at that time. Borrowing an affirmative response, I would then issue subpoenas against, to keep this process moving along rather than just waiting to that night to tell you and putting the matter off another occasion. So perhaps a reasonable timeframe would be three to four weeks to accomplish all that.
Well, four weeks from tonight, would you want to do three?
Four weeks is the thirteenth.
What's best for you, Mark? Kristen, Tuesdays are good for you, right?
Yeah, as long as it's like six thirty-ish.
I would ask that we not do the sixth and go out to the thirteenth.
Okay.
I just had that.
Was it thirteen, February thirteen? For you, for, uh, thank you, Edwin. Nancy?
That works for me, yeah.
Bob? Okay, thank you, Mary?
Since they, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the time, Madam Chair?
Six thirty.
The thirteenth. Six thirty.
I have no other matters for the body tonight. I note that your agenda calls for items ten, eleven, and twelve, and I turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, do we have to?
Why don't we do?
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion that our next date will be Tuesday, February thirteenth at six thirty.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is public participation, do we have any public participation? Any public participation? Seeing none, hearing none, go to remarks from Board members.
That was Rose, Rose.
Rose?
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I apologize, but I unmuted myself three times before I could get through. I don't know, again, if you're having problems or not, but I was wondering, and please bear with me, because I'm not on the computer, I'm just on the phone. The person that asked the question of Attorney Needleman, I believe, regarding the breach of confidentiality, was that board member identified? Could you identify the person that asked the question?
Kristen Wagner.
Pardon me?
Kristen Wagner.
Okay, thank you. And there's a particular issue that is going to be addressed by the attorney or just in general, if somebody breached the confidentiality prior to it coming to the Ethics Board? I'm just curious as to what the question really is.
Yep, the question was if there's any sort of regulation or procedure around if there's a breach of confidentiality in an openly public forum, but she said he'll kind of review and let us know after he researches that a little bit.
All right, so what I'm hearing is there may be someone that breached the confidentiality, and you want to know if there's a procedure in place to address that? Okay, if that's what I'm understanding correctly, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Seeing no other public participation, we can move on to remarks from the Board members.
Well, I'd like to say that it's great to be back on the Board, and I would like to thank the Democratic Party for placing me back on, even though I am an independent, an independent who actually leans conservative. So I think I would like to thank them for their for their confidence in placing me back on. So thank you.
Welcome.
I would like to
I would just like to say
Go ahead, Bob.
See things moving along, and it seems like it has been dragging for an awful long time, but I'm glad we're on the road now, and looking forward to seeing how this is going to resolve. Thank you.
I think we're in a good place. We're getting things in motion, and I think that all the work we do now will lead to smoother processes, you know, if any other complaints come in.
And a thank you to Lynn, who is, you know, really spearheaded getting the attorneys on board, because I know that was something you highly advocated for. So thank you, Lynn.
And I think we're in good hands. Mark?
I think so, too.
I think we're in good hands, and thank you for coming and your direction and advice. And I'm not worried anymore. And thank you, Heather.
First time's always the hardest.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.